Friends of Mill Valley Steering Committee, welcome to our 2015 Candidates Forum, Conversations with Dick Spotswood. Thank you all so much for attending. It's great to see so many familiar faces, former elected officials, current officials, friends and neighbors. Our thanks to Throckmorton Theatre and to our sponsors for their support. Just a very brief comment on Friends of Mill Valley. Some of you may not be familiar with the group, but Friends of Mill Valley was formed by a band of citizens in 2007 who shared a vision of Mill Valley that valued small-town character above the calls for the urbanization of Miller Avenue and proposed character-changing, high-density development. Our steering committee, including Susan Kirsch, who's here in the audience, Liz Speck, Dave Ledoux, Mitch Wurtsman, Duncan Breschel, and Emeritus member Bob Silvestri, framed a mission statement, which is on the banner before you, but let me read it. Friends of Mill Valley works to add the voice of the community to the city's decision-making process about growth planning and other issues of significant public interest, and to promote greater public participation in shaping successful solutions. This forum and the election of our city council have been important elements of that pursuit. This is our fourth forum. Tonight is about our candidates. We aim to discover something of who they are, how they think, and what they think. Please join me in welcoming our moderator, former mayor and politics and government columnist for the Marin Independent Journal, Dick Spotswood.
What a pleasure to be here tonight. Great turnout, which is a compliment to you and to the people of Mill Valley who care about their town. I had the pleasure of serving for a number of years on the council, and I can tell you it was an extremely rewarding experience. And I envy, in a way, our five candidates tonight, because before them, if they succeed and win a seat on the council, will be a real joy. After I served for two years, a good friend of mine, Kathleen Foote, who was my first campaign manager, ran, actually was, yeah, ran for council and succeeded. And about a month after she took her seat, she was walking out of City Hall, and I was coming out of the Mill Valley market, and she said to me, "You told me it would be fun. You didn't tell me it would be this much fun." So to you guys, and Sashi and Stephanie, Stephanie in particular knows it is very rewarding. It has its downsides. Let me tell you, folks, there's not every day is a high on the city council. But the reward, and the real great reward in a town which pays your city council members $300 a month, the real reward is when it's all over, people respect you and say thank you. And I think we can say thank you to the outgoing council members, Mayor Ken Wachtel and Gary Lyon tonight. Because that's the greatest reward. When your fellow citizens recognize your accomplishments and say thank you, that's the reward for being on the city council. That's why these folks are running to be part of their town. This is a town in which good is not good enough. The problem is we ying and yang between very good and excellence, and the structure and the striving is to always achieve excellence. The five folks tonight are going to come up, and we're going to do a different format than many of the candidates' nights we do around Marin County. We're going to spend 15 minutes with each of them, one at a time, kind of in a city arts and lectures style discussion, to find out who they are, how they think, and to get a little deeper in. We'll come back then with a couple of general questions, but most importantly then, we'll have an opportunity for the folks in the audience who want to ask questions and participate in what is a dialogue. I was listening to Pope's comments today, and about six or seven times he used the word "dialogue." This is dialogue tonight, and this is why we have a great town. We took a lottery. I don't want to tell you how the lottery was conducted, but basically got an email and said there should be a lottery to determine who goes first. So I took five pieces of paper, sat at my desk, threw up in the air, and how they fell, picked them up. It turned out Ken Brooks came first. Ken, would you come on up? As Ken comes up, I'll tell you that the order was Jim Wickham, Kurt Connor, Stephanie Moulton Peters, and Sashi McIntee. When we finish tonight, we'll end in a reverse order. Ken?
Yes.
Well, you were kind enough to supply us with a bit of a bio, as all the candidates were, so I'm going to read that and start off with that. In 1989, Ken Brooks opened a retail store in downtown Mill Valley. He quickly learned how much community engagement that entailed. He is comforted to look back at the 14 years at Staccato, knowing that by running a locally-owned, resident-serving business was how he got to know many of you. Most recently, he was chosen to be Mill Valley Citizen of the Year in 2012 for his singular effort in resurrecting Winterfest. He is currently vice chair of two MV 2040 general plan committees, Community Vitality and the Arts, and he's currently the president of the Rotary Club of Mill Valley. Ken Brooks, welcome.
I'd just like to say this is my very first time being on either this stage or any stage.
Well, that, well, I know that because you didn't pick up the microphone. Okay, so I'm telling the truth already, okay. Ken, Ted Kennedy got in trouble when he was asked this question. Why are you running for city council?
Funny you should ask. When I look back at my 25-plus years in Mill Valley, never during that whole time was sitting on the council one of my goals. But I did, like many of the people in this room who follow the local politics, was aware that we had this somewhat unusual situation with three incumbents terming out. So I did pay more attention than usual. And then as it got closer, I looked at my life, I looked at my commitment to the town, and I said, "Why not?" So I went by, I pulled papers, and I, here I am.
Ken, everybody talks about Mill Valley's small-town character. It's the cherished goal of everyone. What's small-town character mean to you?
Well, like I said in my bio, the running a store downtown Mill Valley was, in fact, being part of the small-town character. And to me, the fact that we still have been able to, we have no big chains downtown, and that, for the most part, we know the owner of establishments, we know the manager. If we left our money in the car, they'll say, "Pay us later." So I think there's that kind of familiarity, there's the ease of smiling to strangers in the street, and things like that. So I think it's just kind of knowing everybody is your neighbor and trusting that.
So what's the greatest threat? People think that the small-town character might be threatened. What do they mean by that? Or what do you mean by saving or preserving the small-town character?
Well, this is where I like to quote, when I was involved with a chamber, I was involved with a chamber twice, when I had my store in the '90s. And at the time, a spokesperson from the Santa Rosa Chamber of Commerce came, and I'll never forget it, and it went something like this. "When each of you in the room made a decision about where you were going to live, and you picked Mill Valley, to each of us, that was the best place in the world." And throughout our experience in these small towns, we hold on to that time and kind of resist any changes that may occur. And it was a very powerful thing to say. I was new to that town at the time. I was part of the gentrification. My store was part of the gentrification in the '90s. So I think that we need to squint our eyes a little bit, you know, look at the natural beauty and what we have here. And to me, having an SUV on my butt on Blythedale Avenue would be an example of losing the
Everybody who writes, I won't say everybody, but the huge majority of people in Mill Valley who send emails to me at the IJ complain about one thing in Mill Valley. They love Mill Valley, but there's one thing they don't like.
What's that?
Comments, suggestions, all I hear is, "We've got to do something about it." Yes, we're working on it, and I hear nothing substantial, and every day, it gets more frustrating. As a council member, what would you think about it?
Well, why am I not surprised that that was one of the questions? First thing is, from my experience of these last five or so years here, it does seem like this, you know, very ill-conceived, ill-planned traffic light that was done, you know, for all the wrong reasons, happened at around the same time that Edna McGuire came online with its expanded capacity. And I think that that exacerbated what was kind of this organically slower building of traffic. And I think that when that happened, and we had this, you know, indeterminate length of time, I believe the current city council did jump in and did a lot of actions, and probably did everything that they could and should. I believe we right now might be either in the middle or the end of some of the things that have been implemented that will ameliorate the traffic. And I personally have kind of said it publicly, and I did read the 120-item-next-door thread last night, and I was tempted to share, but I decided I'd wait until this evening. And in 1989, and there was a business task force that Dennis Fisco headed that I was on, that's where I met Paula Reynolds, and I suggested a shuttle, a circular shuttle. The town, the layout of this town couldn't be more perfect for a fixed-route shuttle with perhaps a spur up to the library, perhaps a spur to the things. But that was 1989. This is 2015. And as I said in my bio, I was privileged to sit on and participate in two of the MV 2040 committees. I did buy this at City Hall. It is available online at no cost, there are all copies around. I was not on mobility, and I looked in this, and it's full of shuttle, 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 shuttle. So what I think is that we should enact, and if it takes being on the council to kick-start it with some city funds, or if we can do it as community members, a share-based vehicle that old people, teenagers, and kids would be happy to go on. It should have a fixed route. I am a businessman, so I would not suggest you do one and see if it works. You need to do a fleet and make it work. The mistakes so many businesses and policies are, they go in small to see if it'll work, and that's not the way. So I'm going to stick with that one suggestion.
Which is, in effect, a Mill Valley-centric Uber?
Yes, if you would, if you will. But, but, but once again, a really nice van, it could be a hybrid electric, we've got a charging station that the city owns, I don't know how often it's used, I was there for the celebration of it. So anyway, this is Mill Valley. If we could build a community center 15 years ago, we can get a little fleet of vehicles in our town.
Ken, for, I guess, 25 years since 1989, I've had in my mind the threat of wildland fires, the greatest threat to private life and property in Mill Valley and in all the hillsides community of Marin County. Our fire department trains for the real great disaster, which is an earthquake that causes a fire. And the worst case, of course, is on a windy day. But there's always more we can do. The late Hal Brown said, "There was never too much that could be done to mitigate the risk of wildland fire." Not just evacuation, but the risk of it occurring, or the risk of a small fire morphing into a big fire. What would you suggest we can do to enhance our effort to prevent the risk or to mitigate the risk of wildland fire?
Well, this issue certainly comes close to home because of the recent horrific fires that have been, you know, really 70 miles away from here. I think perhaps, I'm curious, when I drive up in some of the windy, thin windy roads, how could the fire trucks go through this? I'm told that the city owns the smallest legal, shortest-wheel-based legal fire engine that you can really buy, and that the fire department does go through the roads to make sure there's clearances. You know, perhaps there could be a brand-new, remote, single-engine fire station somewhere up high on some land. Perhaps that would be a single act that would enhance the current fire protection, to have some kind of a resource within the city that's high up, so that they don't all have to come through the roads to get to the, you know, to get there early.
One of the increasing trends in local government in Marin County is that there's these joint powers agencies or regional agencies that, for whatever reason, seem to have more and more power. Council members occasionally are appointed to serve on those boards, especially joint powers authorities. I know our current council, some of our current council members do that. How do you see yourself as a newly-elected councilman, serving on those agencies with an effort to increase not only transparency, but communications with the public?
I see. Well, one of the things I've learned in running for Mill Valley City Council is my knowledge of, needs to get beyond the Mill Valley. And I think that I'm, you know, becoming really aware about the impact of the park service on our perimeter and things within the county. I'm not sure, you asked me about how I would help enhance transparency within the organization.
Well, the worry is, certainly with the regional agencies, the worry is that the public's unaware of what they do until they do it.
Yes.
And they tend not to be happy when they find out what they're going to do.
Yes, and there's a...
So it might be better to ask in advance rather than to tell them what's going to happen.
Yes.
The command-control model.
I see. Well, in that regard, as probably many of you people know in the room, there's currently is a situation like that, where the MTC is kind of like, you know, making a kind of an aggressive action at A-Bag. And I think, I actually felt that unless I read today's Marin Post, I wouldn't even know what had happened today, because I think they're doing a good job of chronicling what's going on. And I think that, and I think the city does a good job of making themselves available. So I don't think I answered that question, but I, and I apologize for that.
All right, if you're elected, everybody's got to ask themselves this question, just because it's the fun part of it. All right, I win. I have one thing I want to do first, something I really, really, it's on my mind and it bothers me, and I have always said, "If I'm ever elected to the Mill Valley City Council, by golly, that's what I'm going to do." What is it?
I think it's going to be a helicopter ride with the chief of police and the head-fire guy over around the bay and the mountain. I think that's what I want to do.
That's fair enough, because I got to do it.
Did you?
It was great.
Did you?
When you go past that experience, and you want to get more into public policy, what would be number one on your list?
Well, actually, all kidding aside for now, I actually rent in downtown Mill Valley. Between my store and my living, I, for a while, my wife and I had a house in Homestead, but I live in a, what they now call a microunit. I call it a small apartment, but it is called a microunit. But I am very proud of that, and I think I would like to throw my shoulder against creating more diverse housing options, which, as I've been boning up, have found out that the housing element is full of a myriad of options. I think that this town's the focus of the planning department, the focus of a lot of the iron town, a lot of the energy is being spent necessarily on controlling the growth of these big houses and kind of limiting other kind of growth. But I think there's lots of room to put a shoulder against maintaining and creating. There's some really good ideas in here. I know this document is full of great ideas, and when I was on the panel and we had to decide, well, how do these get implemented, and we had to create, well, this is the one-year thing, this is the five-year thing, this is the 10-year thing. But really, it's all about, I'm sorry, I couldn't see that sign, was that a, I didn't know that. Too many, thank you, thank you. So anyway, that's what I intend to do. I tend to, you know, be a voice for the non-homeowner and try to implement some of the many myriad ways that this document suggests to help stabilize and increase.
Ken, you're running a race where there's one incumbent and two open seats. It means that everyone, it's almost a love fest, everybody wants to be respectful of the other folks. That said, anything you would do differently than the current council is doing?
One issue that I'd like to share is I'm wondering if, and I've been on, the Mill Valley General Plan was my first Brown Act community involvement, so I've been on the Brown Act side, I've spoken many times in public. I would like to see if we could perhaps change the three-minute-per-speaker rule to where the neighbors could yield up to one minute each to a spokesperson for a maximum of six minutes to kind of change the platform. I think that would be something that would be welcomed. How's that?
That's a good idea. Oh, okay. Yeah, all right. Look forward to that, all I need is three votes.
And all I need is your votes.
Yeah.
There you go.
Ken Brooks? Pleasure, I've known all the candidates, I've known you for years, just a pleasure to have you here. It's really a pleasure to see high-quality people run. We've got five high-quality candidates, you're one of them, Ken Brooks.
The community should be applauded for that. A lot of our neighboring communities do not have anybody running for office, and I totally agree, the fact that we've got five qualified candidates is a credit to, yet another credit to our lovely community. Thank you very much.
Ken Brooks. Jim Wickham.
Thank you. Thank you. Jim, good luck.
Jim Wickham, welcome.
Hello, everyone.
It's bright up here. It is. Well, Jim, you've supplied us with your brief bio, and I'll start off with the same as I did with Ken. Retired Mill Valley Police Captain Jim Wickham hails from a fourth-generation Mill Valley family. His dad, George Wickham, served as mayor in the 1960s, and Wickham's children are all public, Mill Valley Public School grads. Given his public safety background and current Emergency Preparedness Commission membership, Jim Wickham is keenly aware of wildland fire potential. He's protective of Mill Valley's small-town character, but isn't opposed to additional affordable housing, if sensitively located and small-scaled. Jim Wickham.
And who said that?
I think I mentioned that about you, because you told me when we had coffee on the plaza one day. Does that make sense?
IJ, I believe, okay.
Fire. I asked Ken that. You've been in public safety most all your life, all your professional life.
37, 40 years, almost, yeah.
Am I right? It's the greatest threat to life and property in Mill Valley? And if so, what can we do? We've got a good operation so far. Any suggestions to enhance that operation?
Well, we have an outstanding fire department, first of all, and outstanding police department. And we have community involvement, people like Maggie Lane, our S. Lane Pass process that we have for evacuation coming to town. You know, vegetation management, building codes that, you know, require defensible space around property, having areas on our streets for emergency vehicles to be able to turn around and get up there quickly, having evacuation routes coming down to our towns, our sirens that we've installed, which I was involved in back in 89 after the Oakland fires. I was just recently up at the Lake County fires, and that was a catastrophic storm. That was a very fast-moving fire. And if it hit Mill Valley, I think we're prepared somewhat, community-wise, because we're aware of it, but it's going to take a lot of managing our open space, vegetation management, and just trying to have a defensible space around our property to really keep Mill Valley as safe as possible.
After the big Oakland-Berkley fire, city manager and I, a couple of the council members and senior department heads went over to Oakland and Berkeley, and the fire department was very kind enough to take us around, show us where it started, the whole deal. City tour deluxe. And Chief Bill Walsh, who, as you know, was a legendary public safety chief of Mill Valley, said to me, "I used to think we'd at least get everybody out. I'm not so sure. It's a real serious risk. We have, in this town, volunteers, cert volunteers, to assist when the day of, you know, the day of disaster happens. They can react. One of the problems I've had is that most of the volunteers tend to be folks like myself, perhaps on Medicare. What can we do?" Thank God for Medicare. Hopefully you move down to the lower class. What can we do to get younger folks involved as cert volunteers?
Well, a lot of it's education. You know, Maggie Lane, I've been involved with the city Emergency Preparedness Committee. You know, sometimes we get a little complacent. You know, you have a wildland fire like Oakland, everyone gets, you know, concerned. We had an earthquake in Napa, you know, everyone's concerned, and we all kind of fall back into our patterns of, you know, life is good here in Mill Valley. I think with our young people, it's constantly educating them, getting them involved, giving them information about what could happen. I wish everyone had a chance to go up to Lake County and just tour the moonscape up there, because it's devastating on what happened. And if people saw that, who live down here in our hills, and realized that this could happen to us at any time, hopefully that would really pike up the education component of, you know, we've really got to prepare for such a disaster here in Mill Valley if it did happen.
Jim, you've raised in Mill Valley and raised your kids in Mill Valley. What would you do, we have an excellent recreation department, but what would you do to enhance that department, especially with our young folks in mind?
Well, you know, when we built the community center, I had actually participated in the old community center, which was a mobile home, I believe, they brought over here from the freeway. So I was at static. I mean, that is our jewel of Mill Valley, is our Mill Valley Community Center, and I was heavily involved with our teen zone. And back in the '70s and '80s, I spent a lot of time working with our teenagers. I feel that it's important that our community center is open to the public, that it's open on holidays, that we extend our hours, it should be available for everyone, and it has to be maintained. It's 15 years old, and it's a gem of our city. You know, we have a great swimming pool. We've just got to keep on maybe providing teen dances more often to the rec department. We just have to make it available more.
The, first of all, we have a great turnout tonight, and the fact that we have five candidates running for three seats is a compliment to Mill Valley. I think five of Marin County's towns were not able to have anybody opposed incumbents, which is very odd, places like Santa Rafael. Mill Valley's been an engaged community, but we have an awful lot of newer folks who have moved to Mill Valley who don't appear to be engaged, and sometimes younger newer folks, who don't appear to be engaged in the community. A little bit with the schools, but that's kind of it. What can we do to get those folks more engaged in the community, to convince them that their future is based upon our mutual well-being?
Well, you know, as people, these old-timers like myself, you know, I saw this change in Mill Valley when I was on soccer, where suddenly we had hundreds of volunteers, people would go out there, you know, be with our kids, do our fields, and what happened is we got wealth. People just didn't want to spend the time, they'd rather pay someone to do the work. And personally, with my background in the community here, it's us, the old-timers, to really go out and educate our young people, get involved. You know, I have a daughter now who's 30, I have two grandkids. My oldest grandchild is going to McGuire School. I'm meeting a lot of new parents now, and these are the generation here, they want to get involved, but a lot of times they just don't know how to. And they're actually excited that I'm running, that someone who's been here for four generations and knows this town so well. I mean, I delivered papers down here when I was the IJ paper boy.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, IJ paper boy. You guys know what a paper boy is? Someone on a bike, you know, and now it's, you know, you pay some guy at 4:00 in the morning to come along tossing your door. So that's the kind, it's just education, it's behavioral changes, it's like having a pride of our community and getting people involved. And that's why I brought back the carnival, and that's why we brought that, the Memorial Day event here at the flagpole for the vets, because this is how Mill Valley was when I was growing up, and that's what I want to bring back to this community.
One of the forgotten roles of a councilman is to recruit people for commissions. We have a whole range of commissioners that really serve as volunteers, that, to the suspicions, they do planning, they do park and rec, they do library, they do arts, you have emergency preparedness, and you're emergency preparedness commissioner yourself. What can, what do you see as your role as a council member, future council member, in recruiting a diverse group of folks who live in Mill Valley to serve as commissioners?
Well, I have, we all have this vision of a small town. I have my vision. I grew up here, my father, you know, this town is part of me and part of my family. And being in police work for 40 years, I'm very good at interviewing people. And when you bring people on to talk about, you know, what's it mean about small-town, charm and everything else, you can go through all the, you know, the BS stuff and get to the point, find out this person is really, you know, true to what we want in this community. And I, hopefully, if I get in the city council, I will guarantee you that if someone gets appointed to a commission or anywhere in this town, that that person has got my approval, where I feel, hey, this person represents our community the way it should be and for the future of my grandkids.
Well, it kind of leads into the question, we've got five candidates, I've met them all, they're all qualified. What distinguishes you from the other four?
Well, I think the thing right now, imagine this, okay, fourth generation, I raise my kids, there are all five of them, I have my grandkids here, but here's the unique thing. I worked 37 years here, since I was 14. My level of life is law enforcement, I've been in this police department, I retired in 2010. I know exactly how the city works, inside out, and no one else in this room has that experience that I get to do. So I combine my fourth generation, my background, my family, myself, working here in the city, and having you guys as our feed into what is right or wrong. I think I could quite nicely help out the city council in having a great time and bring the city back to the great city it should be.
Well... Come on, Stephanie, raise your hand, come on, Steph. Amen, amen. The next question leads right into...
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Given that experience.
Yes.
Traffic.
Huh?
Traffic, yes. The one subject which is the dilemma, and not just in Mill Valley, it's not fair to blame Mill Valley, because if you go to San Anselmo, the folks say, "By the way, ask the questions about traffic." If you go to Cordera Madera, let me assure you, they say, "Don't forget to ask the questions about town plaza, boulevard." Wherever you go, Tiburon, it's out of control, and they're the first to tell you. So it's not a, it's not picking on Mill Valley to say this, but I guess every town is looking for somebody with the golden bullet that's going to solve it. Tiburon now says their golden bullet is bringing back yellow school buses. What's your thoughts?
Well, first of all, let's go back to 1967. My father grabbed...
Wherever you go, Tiburon, it's out of control, and they're the first to tell you. So it's not picking on Mill Valley to say this, but I guess every town is looking for somebody with the golden bullet that's going to solve it. Tiburon now says their golden bullet is bringing back yellow school buses. What's your thoughts?
Well, first of all, let's go back to 1967. My father grabbed me and said, "Hey, Jim, let's go down to Cumino Alto in East Blackdale." I go, "What for, Dad?" They just replaced the stop signs with stoplights because the traffic's building up on East Blackdale. That's 1967, '68. So this traffic issue, I saw it in police work coming along for quite a while. It's been like 10, 20 years. This has been building. Economy gets improved, our schools build, they enlarge them. So we saw it coming. Now we've got to be reactive to the problem. It is a crisis. Personally, when I grew up here in Mill Valley, there's three things we did as kids. We either walked to school, rode our bike, or guess what? We took the school bus. My mom would never take me to school. I was told, "Find a way to school unless it's pouring down rain." Personally, you know, I see the schools getting expanded, we have a lot more kids here, we need to start addressing the issue. How can we get our kids to school without driving, you know, individual cars? I realize now, a lot of people are riding their bikes to school, which is great. I see a lot more. But personally, I feel that we should look at what Tiburon's doing, the model of having school buses, and to see if we can implement it, because I believe strongly, like today when I came home at 3:30 when Park School got out, Blackdale was stopped all the way down to Sycamore by, you know, Farmica. And that's ridiculous. That shouldn't be like that. We've got to get these people out of the cars, we've got to get, you know, maybe school buses, and let's clear our streets. And by the way, my sister lives on East Blackdale. We're not going to make East Blackdale one-way today, but, you know, she has her theories too on how we can improve traffic.
Everybody has their theory.
Everybody has a theory on traffic. We've seen it coming, we need to address it. I think the city council has a task force. The Caltrans issue needs to be addressed, you know, the stoplights down in Tennessee Valley, the overpass, you know, should we look at Hamilton later on? I'm just not sure, but the community needs to get involved, and we need to come up with a decision on it.
We have a very good town government. How do we notch those areas that are not already excellent into excellence?
Well, when I was in the police department, we had a thing called G-to-G, and the guys would come up all the time and give me their work and everything else. I'd say, "Hey, you guys, that's good." But now we've got to be great. And personally, I think what it takes is that, you know, our biggest asset we have in this community right now is our city employees. We have 140 paid, full-time city employees who pull the weeds, who take care of the streets, who clean the refrooms out, and those employees have to be supported, given the tools to do the job. And I think if we do that, we would have the excellence that we all want in Mill Valley is through our employees to do a great job.
I know you and Sashi McIntyre, who's also a council member, are on the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Can you just give us a little update on what the committee is doing?
Well, currently, right now, we're finishing up on our matrix, which is, you know, what are the upcoming years we're going to be doing, how we can educate people, how we can inform them, how we can work with the CERT team? Because CERT is really important in this community, get ready, Marin. And we're very fortunate in Mill Valley to have Maggie Lane. You know, being with PG now as their emergency manager, I've worked with her closely on a lot of things, and we have the community spirit to be prepared for a disaster. And the EPC is only a stepping stone to help these groups out, to educate you to get ready, you know? Are you ready for the earthquake, for the wildland fires? So we've got to constantly deal with them, and of course, work with the fire department and our police department, who are first responders in, you know, addressing our needs as a community.
Jim, Jim Wickham, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Dick, very much for having me. Thank you.
Kirk Connor, Kirk Waria. Welcome.
Dick, we met, and it was on a first-name basis, so I have to interrupt and say it's Kirk Nowor.
Nowor, oh.
Nowor Power, vote for Nowor. Now or never, now or no one.
Now or never. Well, Kirk Nowor is in his second term and currently chair of the Mill Valley Parks and Recreation Commission. Kirk has also served on several committees advancing positive change in our city. Kirk and his family moved to Mill Valley in 1998. He and his wife Sylvia have three children, who all grew up here and attended Park School, Mill Valley Middle School, and Tam High. Kirk worked over 20 years in education management, leading numerous strategic marketing, business, and product development initiatives, and was responsible for $50 million in revenue and over 200 employees. Kirk's strong business, government, and nonprofit experience provides him with the required balance, know-how, discipline, and patience to work through details and complex issues or is considering a diversity of stakeholders. Thank you for the statement.
You're welcome.
Kirk, business, you have a serious business background.
Twenty-three years, yes.
The communities of Marin County, communities of California, are struggling to handle the unfunded pension liabilities of their city employees and the unfunded lifetime healthcare benefits they've granted to city employees. Mill Valley's taken steps. Councilman McCauley has taken the lead, I know, in addressing some of these issues. How would you approach the issue of unfunded pension liabilities?
I was here in the audience, so one of you, three years ago, when John McCauley was running, and this was a campaign issue. And thankfully, it was, because at that time, John McCauley, and elected John McCauley in council, began to address or look at and address the issue of pension liabilities and our retired employees' OPEB obligations. The city has taken good steps, strong steps, in covering our liability, both present and future, and we should be cut up with our liabilities in pension and OPEB to our current employees and retired employees in 10 to 15 years, depending on the assumptions. So we've taken action. We're a fiscally prudent town, thanks to the good work of council members, and I think we need to continue to look at the issue as council members and continue to address to make sure that we don't have an outstanding liability in terms of pension and healthcare benefits to our employees.
An issue that's come up recently related to that is something called COIN, which is civic openness in government, particularly in labor negotiations. There have been various proposals. I know Santa Rafael is going to come up with a, I guess a compromise proposal is the right word, in very short order. What are your thoughts on opening up the process to letting the public know the implications of employee-labor negotiations before a final deal is made?
In the beginning, middle, and end, and all the way through, absolutely not. I think it would be obstruction to negotiations with our labor unions in town. I'm a bit of a... I joined Parks and Rec four years ago, and since then have become a bit of a junkie with all our committees, advisory groups, and most importantly, our council meetings. This was a topic of discussion, and council addressed the issue. To open up discussion, provide a seven-day window prior to the negotiations and before the conclusion of negotiations, as I recall, and I don't want to give bad information, but that's what I recall. And does it go far enough? In my mind, someone who hasn't been on the end negotiating with labor unions, I would say it hasn't gone far enough. But I do understand the importance of council being able to work with the unions and publicly give that information at appropriate times so it doesn't disrupt the process and make it cumbersome where it can't happen.
When I sat on the council, I always thought it would be fun to be a park and rec commissioner. A lot of the other assignments were very difficult. The planning commission was, you know, they're painful at times. But park and rec commissioners just seemed like they had those fields and the recs and the kids, just seemed nice. I know that's not so.
Well, yes, that's not so. That is not always so.
What's been the biggest challenge as not only chair, but as a member of the Park and Recreation Commission?
Well, I'll take it as a moment of pride, not that we did the heavy lifting as commissioners, but that would be the depot restroom and making that happen after...
Is it going to happen?
Well, if you attended the meeting on Monday night, our council has taken steps to fully fund that restroom, based on the recommendation of commission, with the good guidance of the community to make that decision. I think that's extremely important. And, you know, as not important in comparison to council decisions, we do address some complex issues and issues that relate to policy that have long-term effects, and we want to have a balanced approach to making those decisions. I take pride in working on the commission with great commissioners and great city staff, but most importantly, the contributions of our community in making those decisions. So we had a thorny issue of policy, and through compromise, through consensus-building, we came to the right decisions, just as a council member will have to do when big issues come to play and hard decisions have to be made. It's through community participation, and Mill Valley is very fortunate to have a very involved community in making decisions. So as a council member, it's extremely important that the voice of the community is heard and part of functioning government, because without it, we're not a functioning government.
Parks, recreation, are all part of a...
It's not like the TV show, sorry. It's not like the TV show Parks and Rec.
You know, I just... I like Amy Poehler, first of all. I could ask you, who plays the various roles in the Mill Valley park and rec?
No, because I just...
That would be all controversial. She ended up, you know, going higher office, you know?
I missed the later episodes, but...
Small town, a park, rec, all this stuff's part of a small town. What's small-town character? What's the small-town mean to you?
It means looking up into this audience and knowing many, or if not most, of you here, more importantly, in your community, where you live, knowing your neighbors, and working with your neighbors to come up with local... Solving problems with your neighbors versus picking up the phone and expecting that problem to resolve by a third party, whether it's the police or other. We are a community that works together and a community that thrives through our core values. And to me, as a council member, those core values, preserving environment, making sure that there's diversity in our community, supporting our businesses, these are all elements. Conservation, we are in one of the most beautiful places. There's a reason Mill Valley is such an attractive place, and so many parents and families want to move here, and driving prices of property sky-high. It's a gem. We need to protect those gems, and this is all about small-town, our parks, our steps, lanes, and paths, our golf course, knowing your neighbors. These are all elements that are critical in living and enjoying what we all know as the wonderful Mill Valley that we came here and hope to live out our years in.
There was a time when Mill Valley's streets and roads were in pretty bad shape. Former...
They're better now?
Well, former council member Mayor John Jager once famously said he'd just returned from Port-au-Prince, Haiti, and he thought the streets were better in Port-au-Prince.
Well said.
They, in the '90s, did improve a great deal. I think it was Measure C, I found it wrong, that was passed, and a great deal of money was put. But over time, as things happen, things get diverted. You know, what's your reaction to the complaints that Mill Valley's streets and roads, while slightly better in Larkspur, need a lot of work? Which is voted as the worst streets and roads in Marin County.
The municipal sales tax that you're referring to and dedicated to the funding and infrastructure of Mill Valley, that's important. It's coming due, and we will, as a council, will have to address this issue, to provide and dedicate funding to improving our infrastructure, specifically our roads. We're beyond this stage in many ways in just providing ceriseal to improve the surface. The depth of the problem in many roads goes much deeper, and the costs go much higher. So in proposing a measure to the public to have to pay through taxes, if it's known to be applicable to our streets and dedicated our streets, I believe if we come up with the right strategy, we'll have the support of our community to improve our streets. We're a fiscally prudent town, and being fiscally prudent requires dedicated funding through sources, and if it has to be a municipal tax or other, we need to explore the possibilities and make sure the money is spent and dedicated to that use.
I know there's been suggestions by certain groups, employee groups, that Mill Valley's fire department perhaps should merge with the Southern Marin Fire Department. Any thoughts?
We have a new police... Sorry, a fire chief. The thought is that if... One of my first efforts when I decided to run for council was to go out and speak with all the department heads of our city. I met our two battalion chiefs and interim chief, Tom Welch, who has now just been promoted to chief of the fire department. They share service. We're in a handshake agreement with Southern Marin. When there are two-alarm, three-alarm fires, they work with each other to address the fire or the emergency. I expect we will continue to collaborate as such. To formalize that agreement, that's a discussion that needs to take place publicly in open forums with department heads, with our city manager, with the public in chamber on the agenda to reach a decision about whether we should merge or have a unified fire department with Southern Marin.
Does it make sense to you, or should we stay independent?
It makes sense to our fire chief or our firemen. They recognize the benefits of doing so. I haven't come to that conclusion. I have to vet the issue as we do the public in deciding, when you lose resources, we should not. We should gain resources, but is that going to be the case? The proof will be in the pudding.
I'm certainly not picking on you when I asked a question about traffic, because I'm asking it very...
I thought it was going to be Parks and Rec again, sorry.
And perhaps I'm searching, stroveing to find somebody who has a new idea, and we've heard a couple of new ideas. Uber approached mobility in Mill Valley, bringing back the yellow school buses, which Tiburon tells us has become a success, or at least this year, their first year really bringing it to fruition, a success. Any other thoughts?
Yes, we, as a city, have a task force, and I've been to both task force meetings. As Jim said, traffic isn't a new problem. And at the first meeting, Kate Sears said, "Well, you know, we moved to Santa Rafael back in the '60s, and part of the mediating factor in moving to Santa Rafael was because the traffic in Mill Valley had gotten so bad." In the second task force meeting, there was discussion and many of the proposals and outcomes of the data and solutions from that proposal in 2000, when traffic in Mill Valley was so bad. Very important to me is multimodal transportation options, and the Miller streetscape will begin to address that. We have other opportunities through Safe Routes to School. We have a voice in the city, which is our BPAC. They are a voice that gives great recommendations. I believe we, as council, should listen more closely and...
What is BPAC?
Oh, the Bicycle and Pedestrians Advisory Committee. My apologies, thank you. They're a group, just like Parks and Rec, that has formal meetings and discusses issues of importance to pedestrian and bicycle safety. It's gotten to a point where many kids, they'll tell you, "I don't want to ride to school. It's too dangerous. The cars out there are going too fast. I can't walk." There's just... Jim, sorry, Ken, where did Ken go? The reference to the SOV on his tail, threatening him, "Traffic is a problem. We need, through education and efforts and taking our kids as our role models..." Fifty to 60% of the kids at Mill Valley Middle School ride their bikes or walk to school. When I look in the mirror, I see the problem, and the problem is me. Whenever I pick up my keys to go out the door, I need to re-educate myself, just like all of us do, and how many times we get in that car per day, how many trips we're taking per day, and start to consolidate. Small steps, as come out in the traffic advisory meetings, small steps will bring about great rewards. Each one of us needs to play our part, but we need to know where we can take steps. I think I'm a pretty conscious person about taking trips, but I honestly take about six trips from my home in Cascade Canyon to downtown and hitting the corridors of Blackdale and Miller, and compound the problem and help turning it into a parking lot.
Kirk, thanks.
My pleasure. My pleasure, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Hi, Nick.
Stephanie, thanks you for the statement. And let me read it. Stephanie Moulton Peters was elected to the city council of Mill Valley in November 2007 and served two terms, serving as mayor in 2010 and 2014. She's also chair of the Board of Transportation Authority of Marin, TAN, and represents the Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmen on the boards of the Marin Transit District and the Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transit Smart. She's recent past president of the Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers and served on the executive board of the League of California Cities, North Bay Division. A longtime promoter of walking and bikes as a mode of transportation, Stephanie is chair of the City of Mill Valley Safe Routes to School Task Force and participates in the renovation of Mill Valley's historic steps, lanes, and path for recreation and emergency egress purposes. Prior to being elected to the city council, Stephanie was president of the West Blasdale Canyon Neighbor Association, served two terms as chair of the Mill Valley Emergency Preparedness Commission, and led Division Six of the Mill Valley Community Emergency Response Team. Commission and led Division Six of the Mill Valley Community Emergency Response Team. She also serves as co-chair of Mill Valley Middle School and Old Mill School Emergency Preparedness Committees. And in 2005, she served on the City Services Tax Renewal Committee. Stephanie Moulton Peters, welcome.
Thank you, Dick. And thank you to the friends of Mill Valley for making this forum available. I like how your format has evolved. Very nice. I feel like I'm on the Letterman Show or something.
Less ratings.
Yeah.
And it's Colbert now.
I know, I'm a little out of date. I don't stay up that late anymore. Except at council meetings.
Yeah, I know. Better to watch Colbert.
Than you, Dick?
Well, Stephanie, so you're running again. What are you gonna accomplish, what do you want to accomplish, want to accomplish this term that you didn't accomplish before?
Great question. And I'm sure that's one that everybody wants to know. Why is she doing this again? There are some things that I am really passionate about, that I've been working on for a very long time. They have long fuses and they're complex and I want to see them through. So, what are they? Traffic is one of them. Do you know that if we reduce the traffic by 15%, not 100% but 15, we'll actually see a big difference in the way our streets flow? And I think we can get 15%. Our kids have reduced by 50% at the middle school and that's what I've been doing on Safe Routes to School. Flooding has not been addressed and I take some ownership for that on this council. That's a complicated problem and it needs more attention, along with fire risk. There are the streets that we talked about, our sidewalks, our sewer system, and to address them, we have to renew the municipal services tax. I did serve on that committee the last time. I have a very good understanding of what it takes to pass it. And also, new financing strategies that will stretch our dollars and make them go farther so we can keep our roads in shape. And finally, just two other things. I co-chaired and co-founded Mill Valley Aware. You may not have heard of it yet. It's a community founded, a community coalition funded by a county grant to address teen binge drinking and substance abuse. It's very high in our community and we need to work on it together as a community and that's a multi-year process to change behaviors and offer alternatives for our kids. And finally, I'm a big one for communication between City Hall and the community. We've done a lot to improve it, but there is more to do and more to do to be collaborative and responsive and I want to be part of that, too.
Stephanie, I asked one of the other candidates before, but it's really appropriate, particularly appropriate for you, as a person who has served on Joint Powers Association, Joint Powers Authorities and regional agencies, and TAM, the Transportation Authority of Marin, comes to mind. The accusation's been made of some of these agencies, and it's certainly been made of TAM, that some of the, sometimes the decisions are made or presented as fait accompli's and that the public is brought in in these new kind of open forums where nobody actually gets to speak to the microphone, where the decisions have already been made. How do we change that?
Sure. Good question. So, what I would like to do, and what I did do as President of the Marin County Council Members Association, that's the association, we're all 11 cities and towns, the council members get together once a month. And we made an agreement that we would update our website and get all the JPAs links to them on there. We'll do that this year and that'll be the place where you can go to at least see what's going on. Now, beyond that, Mill Valley does have such a strong community engagement way of being that bringing that into some of these JPAs and looking for ways, as we've done with this community, to have community meetings outside the formal council meetings where we can really have a dialogue, these are some of the things I would do to address the difficulty some people feel in accessing JPAs. The upside of JPAs is we all work together, all the cities, and we reduce the redundancies and the overlaps in service provision. And that's an efficiency that's a good thing. We just have to do a better job of connecting with all the communities.
It's, having served on elected boards, you want to be supportive of the entire institution. But in your mind, sometimes you say, "Damn it, why did we do that?" I certainly did.
Yeah.
What's on your list of, "Damn it, why did we do that?"
You know, there's probably a few of them. You know, let me pick out two things that are, "Damn it, why'd we do that?", that I'm actually proud of how we turned it around. There was no secret that last year, Level Avenue had a whole lot of construction. I went out and looked at it and it looked like the Wild West to me. There was trucks all over the place and people couldn't get down the street because the cement mixers were coming up and down and deliveries all day long. It was really tough for the people living there. And so, as mayor, I raised my hand, said, "Time out. We gotta do a better job managing this because the quality of life has really been impacted. We may not be able to put the stops or limit building, but we can sure do a better job managing it." And the staff and the city manager and the planning commission and everyone worked very hard to take a close look at what were we doing and could we do a better job? And we did make changes to our construction management plans. We asked the contractors to be more organized in their planning of deliveries of materials and other things. So, that was something that went off the rail and I think we got it back on pretty well. The other one, most recently, some of you in the audience tonight are part of the downtown neighborhood, and we were redoing our zoning and design guidelines for multifamily housing. And we focused a lot on Miller Avenue and trying to get the rooms right for each of the rooms and development standards. What we didn't focus on enough was the downtown. And the good thing about democracy in this community is the community let us know. We didn't get it right. And it took us a little while to hear it, but we heard it. A bunch of us, myself included, went out in the community and listened. We came back and said, "You know what? We gotta fix this. We missed some stuff." And as of a couple of weeks ago, we've come up with a different game plan. It's a lot of community input. It will unfold with more community input, but we made a big change, as big as I've ever seen us do. And we did it fairly quickly. So, things go wrong, we can fix them and we can work with the community to get it right.
Traffic, the one issue that everybody brings up.
Yeah.
I drive down Blytheale, get frustrated, say, "I know, I'll go through TAM Junction." And then I say to myself, "That damn Tennessee Valley stoplight." It's driving me crazy.
Yeah.
Now, I'm not sure that's the cause, but I certainly think that. And I think bad things when I think that. Just, and I'm frustrated. And I know that there's no worse place to be than an elected official in that position when nobody has really presented solid answers. We've heard some innovations tonight and I'm really delighted by hearing some of those. There's probably more innovations you've heard tonight than you'll have heard in the county of Marin this year. So, except for Tiburon. Credit to Tiburon for bringing back the yellow schools, school buses. Thoughts?
Sure. First of all, you know, the law of unintended consequences. The signal was put down there at Tennessee Valley because of the new pedestrian path. Everybody thought it'd be really good, but not really because it was a signal and darn it, couldn't we've had an underpass or an overpass? Then we wouldn't have had a signal, but there wasn't enough money for that. So, we got a signal. So, then it started balling up the works. So, then, as mayor, I asked councilmembers Wachtel and John McCauley, who like to drive the most and have the best cars, if they would be on the subcommittee to figure out what to do. And they work with Kate Sears' office. No, this is the truth. I mean, these guys were great. And they just met with Caltrans and said in no uncertain terms, "Guys, this sucks and you gotta do something better for us." And it took a lot of pounding. It's a David and Goliath thing. Mill Valley up against Caltrans? Come on. But they hammered and hammered. The signal has gotten worked around so that there's more green light going through. There's one last phase to get rid of dedicated left turns into Tennessee Valley Lane, make it go back to when you just would take a left turn when there was an opening. That's supposed to happen this fall. It's painfully slow, but I'm sure it will happen. What Ken and John need to do is go back out there and have a little road rally at the legal speed limit and let's do some timing. If you go out Miller to go southbound or if you go out Blytheale, which is faster? And I think we need to change perceptions. I think it's much better going through there now. But that's about cars, so let me switch gears. School buses, I think, are a real possibility. We used to have them. Our streets were designed for horse and bogie, for the old vacation community, right? They weren't designed for all the cars. I worked with the Marin Transit District, whose board I serve on. Two years ago, I lobbied for a school bus study and we have one. And now, God bless Tiburon for going ahead and figuring out what to do with their One Tiburon Boulevard. Mill Valley has more than one road that we gotta figure out. And the Marin Transit Study for all of Marin County has identified the opportunities in each school jurisdiction. And our biggest bang for our buck for school buses is Strawberry Point and Ed McMahon. Why? Because those are the cross-town trips where the parents are going over the Blytheale interchange, one way there, one way back. We identified in our traffic committee that the mayor chairs, we have some 300 to 700 trips a morning going across that interchange because of kids. So, the most targeted and strategic uses of school buses that we can make is to get school buses to carry the kids that are going across town to these schools. Now, what does that require? It requires Mill Valley City to get out of its comfort zone and say, "We're gonna fund school buses." The Transit District does not have the money to do it right now. Down the road, maybe we'll pass another sales tax and afford it, or maybe it'll be part of our municipal services tax. But the policy issue for this city council coming up this coming year is, do we want to spend a quarter of a million dollars of general fund money that could go to paving our roads or something else that we value? Do we want to put that into school buses? And I think we'll have a good community conversation and I wouldn't be surprised if we did this. But we've hit the wall with traffic. Everyone knows. I can't resist doing this because I show it, see, where does traffic come from? Yeah, it's us. And it's gonna take each of us looking at our trips. Now, what can I say? In this room, a lot of us, our families who've grown up and gone away, we're not the hype trip generators. My husband and I just became empty nesters, so we're not racing up and down and picking up kids. The younger families are doing it. The younger families are interested in school buses and carpooling and all that, too. The rest of us have to figure out, can we, can we figure out, like, don't go out and do errands at 3:00 in the afternoon. Please, don't get on the road. That's the worst time. Can you go, you know, 10 to 2?
Tell us, if it's gonna help Marin or it's a waste of money.
Sure. I'm very proud to be on the SMART board. You might say, "What's somebody from Mill Valley doing on the SMART board?" Because at this point, it's not coming to Mill Valley. Now in the future, who knows? It might. SMART was conceived as a way, we had our narrow four-lane highway, we were there between Santa Rosa and San Rafael. It is very painfully slowly being converted into three lanes. But that will not get done before the SMART thing starts running at the end of next year. The initial use was to carry a lot of the people who live in Sonoma County and work in Marin County. But here's the funny thing. The traffic in Marin County, everybody used to go to San Francisco to work, that's only 40% anymore of going south in the morning. The rest of 60% are going north to their jobs in other job centers. And aha, there may be a place for Mill Valley and Marin to use SMART to go north. If you think of SMART as the fourth lane on the freeway, that's what it's gonna be. And you're gonna be able to ride, or those who ride it are gonna be able to go at 70 miles an hour and watch all the traffic on 101 that stalled during commute times. That's what you get out of it. On a selfish level, down here, the less people that are driving on our part of 101, the more we have to ourselves. So, any way you look at it, from a cost basis, it's cheaper to build a railroad than a freeway, but a lot. And this is gonna be, I think, the way of the future. Forgive me, I'm gonna say one more thing. I don't just think this, I know this. As a young student graduating from Stanford, I lived in Palo Alto and my first job was in San Francisco. I had a little apartment downtown Palo Alto. I rode my bike to the train station. I took the train to San Francisco and I walked Market Street and I loved it. That was the best commute of my life. It's not a commute, it's a lifestyle. You meet the same people every day. You make friendships. You celebrate marriages. Babies are born, people die, you play poker, you have a drink on the way home and you're nice company by the time you get home. But you didn't drive.
Stephanie, thank you. Hello, Sashi. Pleasure, as always.
Do you?
Have a seat. Well, Sashi McAttee and her husband Dave have made Mill Valley their home for 15 years and they're raising their two daughters here. The McAttees also base their family business in video, Infinity Video Systems here in Mill Valley. Sashi's professional background is in finance and business development. Sashi serves on the boards of several education and women's nonprofits, in addition to volunteering with Kido and the public schools. Locally, Sashi served as Vice Chair of the Emergency Preparedness Commission and is Chair of the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, Steering Committee. Sashi is also a musician whose rock band has performed at the Sweetwater and other local venues. Sashi, tell me about your rock band.
We're called Pieces of Flare and we play in a, we rehearse in a garage on Circle Avenue and we've only had the police come by once, so, so far, I think the neighbors are at least moderately appreciative.
Sashi, you're a candidate for the Mill Valley City Council. What's making you run?
Well, to quote my friend Rita Abrams, "Mill Valley, California, that's my home." So, we've lived here for 15 years and we're raising our kids here and this is our home. And at this time, we have three seats up and the people whose seats are up have been here for eight years. And that's, it's a time of change and I think that it's a time to bring some new energy in and some, to potentially make some changes, some positive changes and build on what the previous councils have done. And I think it's, this is a great time to get involved.
Small town. We all talk about small town character. We ask everybody, what's it mean to them? You're a resident, longtime resident, raised your family here. What's Mill Valley's small town character mean to you?
A small town character means to me that, you know, when I, my, whenever we go to the grocery store, my kids always get irritated with me because we have to stop and talk to everybody along the way. Like, there's a, you know, there's the, there's a policeman that I rode in the patrol car with during the evacuation drill, putting signs on doors. There's, you know, my friend telling me about the dangers of glyphosate spray on Ring Mountain. There's a, you know, there's my dental hygienist. You know, the, everywhere you go, you run into people that you know. And it's about the, it's about the neighborhoods, too, and about how tight all of our little neighborhoods are.
Money is tight in all small towns. In recent years, the regional agencies have made more and more demands on communities like Mill Valley to build more high-dense housing, to provide more services, but they don't provide any foundation, or funding. What's your reaction to that?
I think that the more local we can make decisions, the better. And that even goes down to the neighborhood level. And I think that the example of the downtown neighborhood getting their zoning changed is an example of an extremely local action that was taken by a group of neighbors. So, the more removed we get, the less participation there generally is and the less transparency there is. So, I think that Corner Madera was a great example of both things we could do right and things that we could do wrong. They actually removed themselves from ABAG and therefore were able to negotiate directly with the state and some of their regional housing needs allocation numbers were able to come down as a result of that. So, I think the, the more local we can bring these decisions, the better. And any, anything that goes on in any of the JPAs that we are a part of, I think that the city can use some of its communication vehicles to also make some of that information more available to people who are not able to go to all of these different JPA meetings.
You have a business background. One of the financial aspects of the city, which I've asked before and has been certainly on the front pages for the last couple of years, has been the unfunded pension liabilities. Is the city doing enough? If not, what could they do to protect themselves better for the eventuality of another downturn in the stock market?
Yeah, I think we've made a good start. I think that one of the things that we did that was a great thing to do was to go from partial prepayment to full prepayment of our other post-employment benefits and reducing the discount rate from 7 to 6.5%. Although, reducing the discount rate then also increases the amount of the unfunded liability. But at least then we're aware of it and we can, we can, we can deal with it. I think in, in general, we, we need to, we need to be vigilant that we're- I think in general, we, we need to, we need to be vigilant that we're not making promises that we can't keep in the future. And we've created some new tiers for the new employees coming in. And unfortunately, we've lost actually a number of longtime employees, but some of the new people coming in to replace them would be coming in under those new tiers.
As a parent, and as a person in interest of the city, how do you see the current relationship between the Mill Valley School District and the city of Mill Valley?
I think that the traffic committee is a good way to make that a little bit more formal. I think informally, it's nice that the mayor and the president of the school board live in the same house. So you hope that they have some good conversations over the dinner table. But I think--
I heard the screaming two blocks away.
I think, I think that this is a good opportunity with the traffic committee to really kick off better, and maybe perhaps a more formal relationship with the, with the school board. Because we share, we share some constituency, and we, you know, we share some problems, traffic being the number one. And having some casual relationships, and also perhaps a more formal one, I think, would be beneficial to both groups.
How are we doing communicating with, between the city and the folks, and particularly, I would say, younger folks and newer residents? Some agencies are great, some are a little weak. We had a county official one time say to me, when in response to, the public said they didn't know, the official said, "What was on my website?" Not too many people read the city website or the county supervisor's website. What do we need to do more to involve the public into our daily affairs, the public affairs in Mill Valley?
Well, when I was president of our homeowners association, that was actually one of the first things that we kind of tackled was people not reading the, you know, we've sent things in the mail. People should read it. They're adults, they can read the mail. But people have lives, they have stuff going on, and they don't pay attention to all these little details. You have to have multiple different ways of reaching out to people. Some of those will penetrate, and the things that are important to them will stand out. But I think the MV Connect newsletter is actually really excellent, and I hope everybody here subscribes to that. And the other thing that any of you who use Twitter, and I totally recommend, is that you subscribe to the Mill Valley Police Twitter feed and put it on a push notification, because you'll get it right to your phone, and they'll tell you. Like, I went to a friend's house on Level, and the next day, there was a tweet at 7:00 in the morning that there was a power line down on Level Avenue. And I called her right away and said, "Don't, before you leave your house, there's a power line down in Level Avenue." So I think that we can, we can make further use of some of these other channels. I think also, one of the things that is sort of unique to Mill Valley is that everybody on the council does have their little, their own little circle of relationships, that, you know, people that they know, their neighbors. And information kind of gets out that way, too. And I think that having, you know, as a young, you know, one of the young families that's been referenced a lot tonight, my network is composed of also these sort of young families. I think it's going to be the mix of people on the council also reaching out to their personal networks, in addition to these formalized communications that really kind of helps get the word out.
Traffic. I've asked each candidate the question on traffic, and all of them have come up with at least an interesting addition to the discussion. Thoughts on traffic?
Traffic is definitely number one on everyone's mind. And I am one of those families that has to drive to their child to Strawberry Point. The school, the local, you know, walkable schools get filled up, and then everybody gets shunted into Edna and Strawberry Point. And I do agree that the crosstown trips are the ones that we should address first on the, on the school trip side. And I think that the traffic is going to be solved by a bunch of small solutions all adding up together. And I think that that should be one of the first things that we look at, is how do we get the people who live downtown and have to go to Edna and Strawberry Point? How can we help them organize and get either a school bus or carpooling? I can probably give you a couple of names right now of the moms, the PTA moms, who would be excellent at getting every people organized about this, and who are really eager to make something happen. So that's one, is really, you know, picking some of the trouble spots and really having a hands-on approach to addressing them and getting people involved. And then, too, the Caltrans lights, the Tennessee Valley light, and we're going to get the left-turn permissive protective light, and we'll kind of see how that goes. And I think that if we can try to push towards perhaps even getting that right turn that everybody goes off on the shoulder to 101 South, you know, made into a lane, you know, we can, I would love to see if there was a possibility of getting an additional lane onto 101 North, too. But, you know, those are the bigger dollar, kind of longer-term solutions. Blydell is just straight up over capacity. And the, any small ways we can do to get cars off the road. One thing that we've done personally is, we actually are a one-car family. We've got a minivan with the car seats in it, and we have an electric bike. And my husband drives the electric bike to, you know, as far as San Rafael to go get acupuncture. You know, we trade off with the car. If I don't, you know, if I don't have the car, I take an Uber. You know, I took an Uber up to the Marin Independent Journal the other day for the endorsement meeting, and then Stephanie gave me a ride home. So, you know, there are things that you can, that you can do, but you really have to make that lifestyle decision to reduce those number of trips and figure out how to make that happen. And I think the city can help people figure out how to do that.
Our self-image as a community incorporates having a vibrant business community, a downtown retail community which we can shop locally at. The great fear is that the shops, you know, the economics of it will force them to become just tourist-serving. What can we do as a city to encourage a vibrant, locally-serving business community? And of course, addresses the traffic issue at the same time. If you can get some of these services in town--
Yeah.
--you don't have to go on the freeway to San Rafael or Corner Madera to five pair of shoes.
Well, in the short term, I think that's going to be, it's going to be really important to preserve the businesses that we have currently on Miller Avenue during the Streetscape project. So I think the, my concern is that we are very hands-on in how we communicate what the construction impacts are going to be, both to residents and to the Miller Avenue businesses. And I know that the Chamber has offered to help with some of that outreach effort and make sure that people know, because it'll be on a, you know, even a day-to-day basis, okay, this is going to happen here, and this is going to happen there, and that's going to affect you. And first of all, we said, we need to make sure that we preserve what we've, what we've got. I think that we have a really entrepreneurial community, and there are a lot of really smart people who live here. So I think if they, if, there are a lot of, if there's an opportunity to create some more local-serving businesses, I think we have the people here to do that. I don't know that the city is going to be able to necessarily cede that in any way, but I think we could also work with the Chamber to try to encourage more local-serving businesses.
Sashi, we have five qualified candidates, all interesting folks. What distinguishes you and makes you the candidate the folks should vote for?
Well, I think that, I agree with you that I think we have five great candidates. I think that that is, really speaks highly for Mill Valley. And so what distinguishes me? I think I would bring some new energy to the process and some enthusiasm in reaching out. And that's, that's something that I just, that is, what is natural to me is to, is to make relationships and make connections with people, and I love that. So I think that would be the way that I would approach being on the council, too, is this is a way to, you know, channel some of these relationships in and get people involved in some of these projects. And I think that that, that experience and that sort of natural inclination, I think, would be a good addition to the council. And I really hope that you will support me. Thank you very much for listening.
Sashi, thank you. Don't go far, because we're going to ask all the council candidates, come on up. And so you stay up here. I'll move out of the way. This is the level the playing field question. And first of all, most of this stuff is done by lottery, but you guys have just done your own lottery. When you pick your seats this way, it's kind of like a musical chair, so we're going to use this as your self-selected order, starting with Stephanie to come on down when I answer these questions. But it's a pretty basic question. There's a lot of questions I've asked some of the other folks that I haven't asked you, because I haven't asked everybody the same question. I'm really just trying to give this, this is an opportunity to get the folks here to know you a little bit better. And so I, questions were either picked because I thought they were appropriate to you or just kind of curious how you'd answer them. But I want to give you now the chance, starting with Stephanie, to comment on any subject that I might have brought up to somebody else that you haven't had an opportunity to address and that you'd like to address. So Stephanie Bolton-Peters.
Great. Okay, I'm going to do this without notes after all. Small-town character. I also wanted to chime in, and I have a couple of things. I was talking with George Gordon today. Many of you know George. And he's, he's in finance, and he said, "You know, this, this cycle happens, this boom economy, and then the traffic gets bad, and everybody remodels their homes, and there's all this angst in the city. And then it slows down, and life gets back to normal. And then the economy picks up, and the traffic gets bad, and people sell their homes and remodel them, and everyone thinks the world's going to hell in the handbasket." And he said, "I've watched this for 40 years," or however long he's lived here. He said, "It isn't to discount the discomfort and the angst. Like, right now, I don't think people feel like they're living in maybe area RFD right now. It's a little too busy." And, and so I think that impacts our small-town character. I want to say that the city council has worked very hard over the last four years with the community, and Friends of Mill Valley played a big role in this, to get it right with a general plan that values small-town character and really just put it out there that that's a desirable goal. Passed two housing elements that did not have mega developments and large projects, but looked to do infill, small development in the pattern of what exists here in Mill Valley. Had a very robust process with 505 Miller, where the developers really went door-to-door to ask people what would make the project work for them. And have worked very hard to prevent any of the large parcel, high-density things from going on. I think we have our zoning, our housing element, and these multifamily design guidelines that are going to say, what should our multifamily, where it makes sense? What is that going to look like to blend in with our community? So we've worked very hard to do sort of the back-room homework on this, and we've really benefited from a lot of input from all of you. So, I mean, we needed to get pushed in some ways, and that happened, and we responded, and I think we're better for it. The last thing I'll say about small-town character, again, when we're all raising our kids here and you're really involved in the community and all that, and that's such a great feeling. You know, I didn't know anybody until I had kids and a dog. Until then, I really did not know the community. But, you know, the, again, the traffic in the building, it feels like, geez, what's happening to our community? So after the Memorial Day Parade, I'm hanging out in a Starbucks, you know, recovering from going two miles down the parade route waving to everyone, and a young mother with a baby stroller and a toddler looks at my badge, she goes, "Oh gee, thank you for your service. Really appreciate that." And I said, "Hey, let me ask you something. How does this town appeal to you? What do you think of this? You got young kids?" She goes, "Yeah, we just moved here. We moved into Scott Valley." I said, "How do you like it?" And she thought for a minute, she goes, "Appealing." So I just have to say, I think the young families are finding all the wonderful things that we all found when we moved here. Thank you, Mitch, sorry. So we haven't lost our small-town character. We just got to work hard on the traffic and keeping the building under control.
Stephanie, thank you. Sashi, same question to you. Either a question I asked or something that I didn't bring up at all that you'd like to take this opportunity to address. Sashi McEntee.
Well, I definitely want to chime in on emergency preparedness, since that's a big issue for me. I'm vice chair of the Emergency Preparedness Commission, and I'm chair of the CERT Steering Committee. And the CERTs are the Community Emergency Response Team. And we come out in times of disaster, large and small, and assist with the first responders and are trained to do that. And I know that there are a number of CERTs here in the audience, so thank you very much for being here. So there, the threat of wildland fire, I think, is something that is big on everybody's minds with the Valley and Butte fires. And I think it was really excellent that our members of our fire department, and for the first time, members of our police department, actually went up and assisted with the Valley and Butte fires, which one might say, "Well, gosh, they're, you know, they're leaving, leaving us to go fight something else." They got hands-on training in the field that they, that they don't get to get all the time here. And I think that that really is excellent, both as a community service effort and for training for our people. So glad that they were able to get that experience, albeit under so much tragic circumstances. I think that we do an excellent job with our vegetation management program, and we are working with open space to, to have them also participate in that, because the areas of Mill Valley that are abutting open space, you know, if they're, if they're not doing their brush clearing, then it's not going to help us. And what we need to make sure that we don't clear brush and have it be replaced by Scotch broom that has these long taproots and that we can never get out. So that cooperation needs to continue, and that effort is funded by the municipal service tax. 25% of the municipal service tax goes to the vegetation management, and we need to make sure that that program continues. I think everybody agrees that it's important that we stay ahead of that. On the flood control side, we're doing winter storm prep right now, trying to avoid the mistakes of 2000, or, again, to get the lessons learned from 2005 and the most recent flood that we had. And I'm concerned that we, making sure that we not only clear the brush, but try to address the silt buildup and just sort of have a larger, longer-term creek management plan that is sensitive to the natural habitat, but yet actually has, that actually allows us to, over time, get a better handle on the annual winter storm prep work. So I think that fire, fire and flood are big issues for us in Mill Valley, and I don't want us to take our eye off the ball there.
Sashi McEntee, thank you. Ken Brooks, same opportunity. A question I asked someone else or something that you think ought to be brought to the public's attention?
Well, I would say that when you ask Sashi about resident-serving businesses and what can we do, I consider that one of my areas of expertise. And I say that because unless you've either worked at a small retail store or owned a small retail store, you have no idea what's involved. And in the 90s, stores changed hands by word of mouth. A smaller, a bigger store would relocate, the smaller store would, would go into that. There would, I didn't see one commercial real estate sign in Mill Valley. It really was kind of like small businesses growing and feeding into each other. In 2008, there are approximately 100 storefronts in the contiguous downtown, because I've counted them many times. In 2008, there were a full 20 of them, or 20% vacancies. 2008, do we all remember 2008? It seems like not that long ago, but it was a totally different climate. The city, in their efforts to do something, because we didn't know how it turned out, did come up with $50,000 and funded what was another business task force. I was not honored officially, but I did audit, this is the beginning of my civics class, I started auditing that thing. And my comment to many people about you can't buy a needle and thread downtown, you can't get a hammer and nails downtown, is our downtown is fantastic, is gorgeous, and it's what an affluent downtown retail town should look like. There are no chain stores. You know who the managers are, you know who the owners are. When people tell me, when Ace Hardware closed, "We don't have a hardware store." I say, "No, we do have a hardware store. We have Goodman's, but it's out in the highway." Well, Lowe's and Home Depot wiped out all the mom-and-pop hardware stores. We have a hardware store. We don't have a pharmacy. So what I say is that the store, if you're, if a store has been here for three years or more, and we have businesses here that have been here 40 years and 50 years, those are resident-serving businesses. So I do ask you to buy your needle and thread and CVS, but, but to support your local businesses in any way you can, because I guarantee you, it's not an easy, it's not an easy profession. Thank you.
Ken Brooks, thank you. Kurt, please. Question I either asked someone else or just you'd like to give us your thoughts on?
When I filed for a city council on August 12, 2015, about six weeks ago now, I identified issues that I thought were very important to our city. Fiscal prudence, preservation. And by preservation, I, it rounds about, or circles round to small-town character, because preservation involves conservation, environmental issues. The other side of preservation is our small-town character and ensuring that we manage growth and development. Stephanie alluded to the issues we've had with growth and development. We, on Cascade Canyon, my family and I live in a cottage that was built in-- We, on Cascade Canyon, my family and I live in a cottage that was built in 1898. We moved here in 1998, celebrating the centennial of the cottage. It's 580 square feet on two acres of land, abutting open space, a perfect view of trees and nature and beauty for all those houses on level. If you're sitting in the living room and look out, you see what Mill Valley is all about. It's important that we keep our city and our resources top of mind, we protect our watersheds, we protect our creeks, that we have a conservation and sustainability effort. These are all core value issues. Another item was ensuring that we could, and this is something that I learned, I went into Parks and Rec, the Commission of Parks and Rec, thinking that I had all the answers because I'd served on boards, I knew bottom line and generating revenue. As a businessperson, it's a very different role than serving on government. Government requires inclusiveness, it requires transparency, it requires you, citizens, and we have a very involved community, giving feedback and input and addressing issues that are important to them. So we can come up with solutions as a council, solutions as a city, together to address those issues that are important. What's important, managing growth and development, it's something that rears its ugly head in times of great growth. I can understand the pressures, or the opportunity that wants to be maximized in owning a property or a property or land or residency here. But to build out every house to the maximum FAR, and look for every opportunity to make a second unit or a garage as part of that square footage to maximize your opportunity, we have to take a step back, and short of a moratorium, I think we really need to look at our values and maintain our focus as council members on our core values with every decision we make.
Kirk, thank you. Jim? Same question.
Thank you. 1980, I became a police officer here. I strapped on my gun, put on my vest, and I drove the streets at 3:00 AM in the morning. And I loved this job. What I did not understand back then, when I was very young, is this thing called unfunded liability. And as you guys know, after 37 years of being Mill Valley Police Department, I retired as a police officer. And I have a defined benefit, which means I have a retirement. And people have asked me, well, how can you be on the city council, and you have this unfunded liability? So I'm quite aware of it, I've been in the management for 20 years, I've been both sides of negotiations, I've worked closely with our Finance Director, and our current Finance Director, Eric Erickson. The city has done everything they can to keep us from going bankrupt. In fact, we are physically very strong, and our employees, you know, new employees coming on have lower limits now. I recognize that I'm very fortunate to have this retirement, but you know what, having five kids living in Mill Valley, if I didn't have my job at PG&E, I would not be here, I couldn't afford it still. But I just want to bring that up publicly, because people have asked me, how can I be on the city council? And this is asked to our other members here, I'd be willing to talk to you about later on, but I just wanted to mention that. And thank you, guys, and thank you, Friends of Mill Valley, and of course, my friend, who owns this place?
Suzie.
Suzie, yeah. And also, I thank my wife, you know. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, that's it.
Thanks, Jim. Jim Wickham. Folks, this is your opportunity. I'm going to extend an opportunity to anybody in the audience who would like to ask a question. Just a couple of ground rules, if I can. If you would like to ask a specific candidate the question, please state that. If you don't, I'm going to take it as a question to all of them, and I'll start maybe with Jim this time, and go down the aisle. So if you have it, if your question's directed to a specific candidate, no problem, just state that candidate's name. If it's for everybody, either tell us that, or I'll presume that, and we're going to, the lights, there we go, better. Susan, thank you for being our, Susan Kershaw, everybody, thank you very much for helping. Please.
Yes, this question is directed to each of you, and I want to know if each of you would support a formal initiative banning the use of pesticides on public Mill Valley land. Thank you.
I'll start with Jim Wickham, and all the questions from the audience, because we want to get as many as possible, brevity is rewarded.
Okay, my understanding was, I thought 15, 20 years ago, we had eliminated pesticides on our public properties. So I ask, is that true, Stephanie? No? Okay. Well, I would support that, and as far as I know, I believe strongly that Parks and Rec, when Rick Mizuraka was here, they were pulling weeds out of the ground, they weren't using pesticides, and I, personally, I thought that we weren't using it, so that...
Easy answer, ban all pesticides. We have, many ways we can address the problem. Rodents, up to 4,000, are eaten by an owl in a given year, and I think that might be a low number. We, with our DPW or Parks Department, created the owl hutches around the golf course to begin to eliminate rodents, and that's a huge number. I don't know how much pesticide is required to kill a rodent or to grow your grass, but it doesn't belong here. There are alternatives that don't require the pesticides that pollute our environment.
Yes, absolutely. It's hard to believe that we're still putting them on our ecosystem. And if I were you, I'd go to our local-owned hardware store, Goodman's, in the morning, talk to the owner there, and tell them that they really are doing nobody a service by serving anything toxic, and perhaps there are some non-toxic options. Thank you.
Well, I'm actually, I'm really happy to hear that everybody said that they are willing to support a pesticide ban. I would definitely support that. We've recently created an integrated pest management ordinance, and it's supposed to be a matter of last resort, but there is still quite a bit of it also used on the golf course. But yes, I would absolutely support a pesticide ban.
Thank you. I'm sorry, could I ask you to repeat the question, or let me just clarify, was it in our parks that you were talking about, or parks and open space as well?
You don't have the authority over parks and open spaces. You have the authority over Mill Valley land. So the land that you have, that the council has the authority over, would you support a ban?
Okay, that makes sense. We have had the integrated pest management strategy, and we have rare, you know, as a last resort, use pesticides. I'm not knowledgeable about what those last-resort situations are, I imagine they're few and far between. Yeah, I would support a ban.
Next question. Somebody, oh, Mayor Ken Walker.
Hi, I just, I, what? It's me, huh? Okay. I have a question for everybody. What is your view and understanding of the council member in the Plaza Project program? Would you continue it, and what other efforts of public outreach would you suggest that the city is not now doing?
Stephanie, would you respond to Ken's question about the council member in the Plaza Project, which Ken founded?
Ken, I would enthusiastically vote to maintain the initiative that you started, the Council on the Plaza is a wonderful, very informal way for people to touch base with council members on the weekend. You know, we've done so darn much, webcasting and Nextdoor, and Mill Valley Connect, and E-Bless, and all that, and I'm sure, you know, Sashi mentioned the Twitter account, I'm sure we could do more, but I think we're doing a whole lot.
Absolutely, I love the council member on the Plaza. I think it's a great way to have a conversation with a council member that's not subject to the three-minute time limit, and where you don't have to come down to the city council meeting and stand up and talk in front of a bunch of people where you might be uncomfortable. So, I would absolutely support that, I think it's a great idea, and, you know, thank you for coming up with that. I think also, as I mentioned before, that there are other kind of informal ways that we kind of reach out to our members of our community, and I think that that is really important, to kind of, to really actively do that, to really actively cultivate the relationships in the neighborhood, and make sure that people know what's going on. I think it would also be interesting to look at, you know, individual council members maybe having a newsletter, or having some other way of communicating with the public that isn't just the normal official channels, as an addition, not to take away from what we've already got. I think that the city has done a great job in having a presence on Nextdoor, and having a Facebook page, and having the website, and the website is being redone, which I'm, we just had our meeting about the EPC section of the website, so I'm very excited to see the new website coming out there. But I think that it would be interesting to explore other ways of council members even more personally, kind of reaching out to the community.
Yes, I of course would support that, and in my opinion, the last six, about six years, the city has become so transparent, that, and in my opinion, between the e-vite notice, the email notices that you could sign up for, for the Mill Valley Connect, which is this huge discussion of things that make, many cases have already happened, there's now listings of things that are about to happen on the council. So, I think that Mill Valley, and I actually, Ken, are you in fact the one that helped foster the video in the council? Is that true?
No, not at all, council.
Oh, you're not taking credit for that?
I don't take credit.
Okay, anyway, from what I understand, though, we're one of the earliest towns to do that. I happen to live walking distance to city council, I happen to enjoy it, I've been watching it at home, but let me tell you, there's nothing like being there. It turns out that it's easy to sit by the TV and we do other things, but it is more dynamic to me, I'm not being facetious here, it actually does make a difference. So I do support that, and I do now, if anybody ever says, well, I didn't know, I didn't hear about that, or I didn't, when did that start, I say, you're not paying attention, you're not paying.
I would like to entertain a motion to continue the city council member on the Plaza, seconded, do, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
And I would, up at one, Ken, because if I went down in the Plaza, I would invite the city manager to join me, so we could both be there together. And be able to talk, so. So Jim, get ready.
Nice, nice answer, but that gives me an opportunity to recognize a couple of people in the audience, the city manager's here.
The city manager's here, Jim McCann.
And Jim, would you stand up? I do that on purpose, because I think it's important for the public to interact, seriously, to know who the city manager is, and to be able to interact with the city manager. I also want to recognize former Mayor Cliff Waldeck, who's here, and current council member, John McCauley.
David Robb's here.
David Robb, where's David Robb?
Andy Vermon.
There he is.
Annie Vermon's here.
Andy.
Andy Vermon, where?
He was here.
All right, I didn't see Annie.
He's over there.
We got a question back there, and there he is, Annie Vermon.
Dave Robb.
Dave Robb, we heard, Dave Robb?
Dave Robb's over there.
Excellent service, all these guys deserve the recognition, I do that because I like it. We have a question in the back, right here, okay?
Mother, stand.
Speaking of which, former council member, John Leonard.
Thank you. I would ask all of you to give your opinions briefly on the change that has shifted what was formerly Park and Recreation, and put maintenance of the park and recreation facilities under the Department of Public Works.
Thanks, John, I'm going to start in the middle and work out to, just to vary it up. Ken Brooks?
Yes, oops, excuse me. Yes, I was aware of those shifts, and I think, I can't quantify what the shift has been in that particular one, but I will say, there seems like there's been quite a bit of departmental shifts in the town in the last five or six years as well. And I think that there's, Rick Mizuraka was a huge, huge loss to the community, and then the Brandon, who seemed to be coming in his footsteps, and was kind of like a young fellow that could go on for a while, and then he left. So I don't know to what extent your comment is a reflection of that, but if it was, then I would not, would not be supporting it. Thank you.
Kirk, let's go to Park and Rec questions, only appropriate here next.
Yeah, we, in my first term, and you asked this question about Parks and Rec and difficult issues and questions, is one of the first and most difficult things we did as a commission, and that is raise awareness about our concerns to have DPW running our parks. It was a concern there and then, and our Chair, Doug Nelson, drafted a letter reviewed by all of us and submitted to our city manager. Our city manager reacted to our concerns and attended our following Parks and Rec Commission meeting. At that meeting, it was discussed, and apologies were made, and efforts were made to ensure that DPW had an active park in manage, sorry, active part in managing our parks, and not just our street sewers, not just managing DPW-related issues. DPW worked hard and spends, dedicates a great deal of time to parks' issues. As Ken referred to, two vacancies or vacancies that have occurred, there are presently three vacancies, four vacancies, and include the department head in DPW. In reflection, I still think it's an outstanding issue. As a businessperson, I'll look at the P and L for the financial side and fiscal prudence, and the conservative approach that Mill Valley takes to its fiscal policies. We stay in budget. The other side that I look at is our org chart, and to have Parks and Rec separated as recreation and parks managed by our DPWs, I can't help to think that our current org structure has taken a toll on DPW in having to use resources in both areas, and go double time on many issues.
Jim?
Thank you. I think basically, as a council member, if I get elected, is meeting with the city manager and discuss this reorganization, because for 37 years here, I did witness this change recently after I left, where we placed the parks under DPW, and that's like placing the cops under the fire department, doesn't work too well. And I'd like to get more clarification on that, because the old way used to work pretty good, and the morale was really high, and the spirits were good, and our parks were well-maintained, and our streets were getting paved. So, if we overwhelm one person, and we don't have a strong staff in there, the mid-managers, it's going to go to chaos. So we just need to pull back and say, hey, is this actually working, or should we go back to where we were? So that's my opinion.
Stephanie?
I'll just say, I've heard these concerns before, and I think it's good that the community makes themselves heard to both the council and the city manager. And I will just say that the council takes this kind of input seriously, and I think it's always a good idea to look at how our departments are functioning, and whether they could function better. And so I'm taking this all in, you know, as that, and we are looking at it.
Sashi?
I think that you, as a businessperson, you look at putting A's in their places, and you can, you change the organizational structure to fit the players that you have and the strengths that they have. And seeing as we are going to have a new head of DPW coming up, I think it's an opportunity to revisit the issue, and see whether it might be a better fit to move it back under recreation. I think there are some obviously natural affinities for those positions. I think we had some problems with deferred maintenance at the center, because we had the building maintenance people, you know, spread out over DPW. I think that that's, it's an opportunity to revisit the issue, and make sure that whoever we have in the DPW role, and whoever we have in the, and Jenny in Recreation, are able to maintain the service levels that we want to have, that we want to see with the parks. And that the parks are also not used as a revenue generator. Recreation is the revenue generator, is, you know, it's supposed to be a cost recovered. But the parks are a natural, a place of natural beauty for everybody to enjoy. So I think that's another issue that needs to be brought into that discussion, but I think it's going to really also revolve around who the new personnel are.
Susan, our next question.
Given the fact that you've all talked to some extent about the hazards of Mill Valley Fire and Flood, my question is, would you support amendments or changes, additions to the zoning ordinance, which would include a slope ordinance, because as my opinion is, we have inappropriate development on hillside lands, and also a water retention part of that, so that you could reduce the outflow from the hillsides to downtown Mill Valley?
Complicated question, I'm going to ask and answer briefly. Let's start with, Stephanie, have you?
I have a question.
Yeah, that way? Let's go to Sashi, let's start with Sashi.
So you said a hillside ordinance, I think we should, we should definitely look at some sort of impact fee, because the, any development they do on the hillside does impact the way the water flows, and it does impact the way that the, you know, that silt moves. That's something I would like to look into.
The way I understand it, in 2002, I believe there was some trouble on the hillsides, and there was a brief moratorium, and then there was a drafting of a hillside ordinance. I'm not definitely with the details of it, but I'm presuming what you're asking is something beyond that. And I would agree with you that the economic... a drafting of a hillside ordinance. I'm not definitely with the details of it, but I'm presuming what you're asking is something beyond that. And I would agree with you that the economic surge in this community is making these unbuildable lots technically viable. Besides retail, which was caught on my wide refresh, and I do have a degree in building construction, I have a very, very deep knowledge of how things go together. So I would support looking into and possibly supporting an ordinance that would possibly eliminate some sites that are technically not buildable. And to your point of water retention, that's a great idea. I was sharing at Whole Foods the other day because I actually helped volunteer at the art festival, and he was telling me, well, when he was a kid, he grew up here, he said, "We used to swim in that river. We used to, you know, fish in that river." So possibly having some kind of a damming, you know, bring back the dam or somehow some ability during a flood system to perhaps slow down and retain some water and create a natural water feature in this town might be something we could look at. Kirk?
Come down to Cascade, we have our dam and you can take a swim in the old water hole. Yeah, this goes back to my point about managing growth and development. Our creeks, and we witness this every year, we don't see crawfish or small fish in Cascade Creek. Every year, the silting, when the storms come, when they come, and I hope they do come. Silt is the name or the color. It's a bright brown, and it doesn't stop for days. We need to care for our trails and to stop growth and development that impacts our natural resources, those things that draw us all to Mill Valley and make Mill Valley special. We, I'm not going to say we've turned our back on nature, but we have to be very conscious and to address the question. If those properties are untenable for the surrounding area, we need to take a hard look at the zoning. It's an ongoing discussion, as I'm aware. And there's always that pressure, as I mentioned before, to maximize opportunity on property. It should not be at the cost of Mill Valley and the small-town character of Mill Valley.
Kim?
I was around when we had a few houses slide down Montevista because they weren't properly secured to the ground. So my opinion is that retention of water, I mean, I'm totally for the environment and what we can do for it, for the planning portion of it, for hillsides. I mean, Mill Valley's pretty well maxed out, built out, I should say. And that's a planning issue, working with Vin Smith and getting vetted more. I need more information on it to give you really a solid answer. If someone wants to spend $1 million on a lot that's like this, and they have to put a $2 million foundation in, and they meet all the environmental requirements, you know, I'd probably go that way. But most likely, those lots would be undevelopable, and we probably shouldn't allow it at this point.
Stephanie, last one.
So this is a good question. And what I can say is that small cities like ours struggle trying to get to all these issues. The hillside ordinance has been something we've talked about, as well as a riparian ordinance. And meanwhile, we're trying to get housing elements done and other things. And we have many current and former Planning Commission chairs who know in this room how difficult it is to get everything done. The good news is, is that we passed our housing element. We have eight years of respite where we can actually make some progress on some things like this. I support them. They're long overdue. I think a lot of us have talked about the need to look at our hillside development again, ridge lines and our creeks and see what can be done. This is a heavy lift. It's not, this is not a small undertaking. So we've got a few things in the pipeline in the Planning Commission now, but I fully expect that within the next four years, this is something we could and should take up.
Folks, we're right on time. Actually, about five minutes, a little bit lost, is five minutes late. But I'm going to give to you now an opportunity to have two minutes to explain to the good folks here why they should vote, not only vote for you, but tell their friends to vote for you. Because there's no recommendation like somebody who's heard or met the candidates. We're going to do it in reverse order. And when we started, Sashi went last. This time, Sashi goes first. Two minutes, Sashi, on why these good folks should vote for Sashi McEntee.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to our former mayor, Dick Spotswood. And a big, big thank you to Burton and Mitch and everybody with Friends of Mill Valley for everything you've done for our community and for really standing up against High Density Development. And really bringing everybody together here for this event is really just one small part of what you all do. So thank you very much for that. I think we've seen today that we have five candidates here who are here because they care about Mill Valley. And I think that speaks very well to our town. I mean, we are a passionate, involved community, and we have intelligent, capable citizens who have a lot to offer. And they give a lot of their time and energy for this city. And I think that's a rare thing and something that we need to really value. Mill Valley has a history of strong proactive city councils, and this is a chance, this election, to build a strong team that will lead us out into the future. I am committed to ensuring that the council is building the public's trust and continuing to reach out and engage with the public in multiple different ways to make sure that everyone's voice is heard. Community engagement is, I think, crucial for our success in all of these projects that we're talking about going forward. So I want to welcome any of you who are interested to call me. My number is 415-843-1450. If anyone would like to call me, I would love to hear about your concerns. If I'm elected, I plan to be a very active member of the council. And you're all welcome to tell everybody what my phone number is. And we'll talk. So I look forward to working with the other council members to make sure that we are as engaged with the community and listening to the community as we possibly can and that we can all move forward together. Thank you.
Thanks, Sashi. Kim? Oh, no, excuse me. It's Stephanie, the other way.
Okay, two minutes. Ready, set, go. Thank you, everyone. I've enjoyed being part of this candidate's forum. Thank you to the Friends of Mill Valley and to Dick for hosting. Four more years. I really want them. I've got some things that I've been working a long time. School buses, streets and roads, getting Miller Avenue going. I know that those kids are going to ride the bike lanes. I'd like to bring some of my expertise on the municipal services tax. I want to get that Mill Valley Aware thing going so that we help our kids find something else to do besides drink and do drugs. And I want to help the next council just usher in and continue on a really good, solid time for Mill Valley. These are busy times, but I'm committed. I have the energy. I've got the passion. I have a track record here in Mill Valley. We have a leadership role in the county. Mill Valley turns out some of the best elected officials in the county. And I'm very proud to represent us on the Transportation Authority and other boards. I'd like to keep doing that. We have a very positive influence. We all have to work together in the county. So I don't duck the tough issues. I've worked with many of you. I'm a hard worker. And I'll keep it up. And I just really want to bring some things to completion and see them through. So I ask for your vote, and I thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Kirk?
Again, thank you for Friends of Mill Valley for having this event, and thank you all for coming out. We are a lucky town. We have five great candidates running for three open seats. This is an important town, I believe, and it's a transitional period for Mill Valley. And I do believe that we need to stick to our core values. When I filed, my motivation to serve on city council was to serve our city, to serve our community and search for, and achieve excellence in government. We have very big shoes to fill. Stephanie, thank you. Thank you to all the mayors and former mayors, thank you mayor and former mayors for your service. We have excellent representation for our city and a very involved community. I think that's critical going forward. My 20 years in the private sector and my two-year terms and my experience in the nonprofit sector in the last years has required balance, given me the required balance and the know-how and the discipline and patience to work through details and complex issues, always considering the diversity of those stakeholders involved. I'm a dedicated, prepared, and committed to working and serving the needs and issues we face as a community. And I look forward to serving you and Mill Valley on our city council. I ask for your support, and please go to kirkjnowar.com and pledge your support or ask me questions, ask me for my views and where we should be going forward as a city. And lastly, I ask for your vote, please. There are three positions open, and I ask for your vote to serve on our city council. Thank you.
Kirk Nowar, thank you. Jim Wickham.
There's one thing I want you to understand is that I have no ego. I'm not running for city council because I want to be in the city council. I want to be in the city council because I have the passion from Mill Valley. I lived here all my life. My family's fourth generation. I have sixth-generation kids growing up. In my life right now, my wife said I'm crazy, but I believe I can help Mill Valley out with my institutional background, my knowledge from living here all my life, plus working for the city, working with this fine council to hopefully keep moving us forward to have that small-town charm that we love. And I strongly believe in cooperation, collaboration, and communication. I did it for 37 years as your police captain in Mill Valley here. And believe me, I will give back to what you guys gave me here in Mill Valley if I get in the city council. Thank you.
Jim Wickham, thank you. Ken Brooks. I think a good question for everybody to ask of us and of themselves is what qualifications or what experience does prepare one to be a good city council person? It's an interesting question. I think it's also interesting that I believe none of the candidates up here came through what I would consider the more traditional route, which is through planning. And it may be the case that since the new council members did not come through that, we may find a different flavor on the council as a result of some of your issues about planning. And I also don't think I answered the question sufficiently about why I chose to run. When I look at my history in this town, the store owner, the first Santa Claus at Winterfest, lighting trees, true story, lighting, hanging the trees with Kimberly Jessup and I climbing the trees, that ran its course. I left the store. I stayed involved with the community. I ended up joining the social club. The Lions was not able to stay because of the demographics. I joined the Rotary four years ago. I'm the president now. And I looked at myself and is there any other form of civic commitment that I can still contribute in this town? And this opportunity opened up. So I hope that if I, to get your vote, that you'll be voting for somebody who has enthusiasm, is creative, brings a lot of varied background. My professions are retail and building, two doing professions. And I look forward to meeting you all. And I will be happy to meet you at Equator. I've been drinking coffee there every morning at 9:00. So if you'd like to talk further, I'll be there. And after the lobby event, if you'd all like to join me at Vosco's, there are some complimentary coffee and some sweets there for all of you. Thank you very much. You know, and I have to say, Ken, in Mill Valley, it might be councilman on the plaza, but Mill Valley's nature, it's councilman on the coffee shop, is probably just as Mill Valley as anything else. Stephanie Moulton Peters, thank you. Sashi McEntee, thank you. Ken Brooks, thank you. Kirk Nowar, thank you. Jim Wickham, thank you. We deserve, these folks deserve your applause because they're doing a real hard job. And the trick in every Marin community is to get qualified people to stand up and take responsibility. And thank God in Mill Valley, we have five qualified people. Folks, the votes are going to go out, we don't have Voting Day anymore. We have Voting Month. And about 70% of the people in the County of Marin tend to vote by mail. And the votes are going to go out by October, the registrar told me, October 5th, I think they hit the mailboxes. So when they come, I know you'll vote, but more importantly, you're now informed. You're the Pied Piper of good government. Tell your friends that you've made some candidates, who you're impressed with, and ask them to also get involved. When these folks knock on your door, you know who they are. They're not the Fuller Brush Salesman. They're running for council and greeting McCordley and asked their questions. So it's really a pleasure on behalf of the Friends of Mill Valley, and I'm thankful for them setting this great forum up that they've done once again and inviting me to participate as the moderator. It's a great pleasure. Everybody, good night. God bless Mill Valley.